We're the Mope Jazz Group. We're fixing two numbers for you. The first one is an arrangement by Roger Emerson of "Somewhere Over the Rainbow", and then we'll be doing a Kirby Shaw arrangement of "Beyond the Sea". Our co-tennis is Beverly Pizzingerly.
...sides are blue. And on dreams that you dare to dream, really do come true soon. Someday I'll wish upon a stone and wake up where the clouds are far behind me. Where troubles melt like lemon drops away, I'll spin shipwrecked tops that wave in my mind. The sky over the rainbow's wide and wide and long. Somewhere beyond the sea, somewhere waiting for me. My lover stands on golden sands and watches the ships that go sailing. Somewhere beyond the sea, she's there watching for me. Somewhere beyond the sea, she's there watching for me. If I could fly like Peter Pan and straight to his aunt, I'd go sailing. His star is love beyond the star is here, beyond the moon. And I know beyond the doubt, my heart will be there soon. And I know we'll meet, beyond the shore we'll kiss, just as before we all. Happy will be beyond the sea, as ever again, I'll go sailing. His star is love beyond the star is here, beyond the moon. And don't you know, I know, beyond the doubt, that my heart will be there soon. We'll meet, I know we'll meet, beyond the shore we'll kiss, just as before we all. Happy will be beyond the sea, as ever again, I'll go sailing. Jumping, sailing, solo sailing, by myself.
Are you laughing? That is what you are.
Next, we are below, we'll sing the popular tune "You Say Nothing at All". Lexie Fauci will be accompanying her on guitar, and Mehmet Alzal will be accompanying her on bass.
This comes from Wisconsin.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, May 18th, 2015 at 5:32 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order. And request roll call, please.
Bollig?
Here.
Brinear?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Statham?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Brett Howard?
Here.
Poole?
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. Boudreaux is on the way. He called and got away from work a bit late, so he'll be here probably in 15 minutes or so. So people know. So item three, the board will meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.851G, to confer with legal counsel regarding a strategy to be adopted in litigation, which is a possible request for restitution in State of Wisconsin versus Douglas Pettit. So we need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Brinear?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Statham?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
This...
Yes.
One more. You've taken after me. Okay, so we are going to go into closed session. We will leave this room and go next door. We'll come back when we are done.
Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. We were in a short closed session. We're now back in open session on Item 5. Item 5 is Public Appearances, 5A. I will open the public hearing on discontinuing a portion of Soden Drive. Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Mr. Wireland? I know you want to be on camera, so come on up.
I think this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. This is basically part of the project with the referendum where we're going to be basically creating a safer environment for our parents and our students on the Soden Drive component that's surrounded by the Oregon School District properties. So we're just here to, I guess, support that discontinuance. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Wireland? As he said, we talked about this before. So, thanks, Andy. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to Item B, Discussion Possible Action, which is Resolution Number 15-11 to Discontinue a Portion of Soden Drives. Need a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was pain free.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Andy.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Item C, I will open the public hearing, and this is Discussion Possible Action on Issuing a Class B Fermented Malts Beverage and Class C Wine License for Scout Enterprise LLC by Scott Zeitler, agent for Holstein Restaurant, 101 South Main Street, Oregon, Wisconsin, 53575. So, Scott, welcome to Oregon. And if you'd like to address the board, any comments here? Or if not, that's fine, too.
Sure. We put together a restaurant, Holstein Kitchen, that is, hopefully, an idea that was born by people that tilled the land and made the cheese and worked with one another in small communities throughout the state and throughout the Midwest and throughout all of the United States. The food that we serve is farm cooking. We take comfort food recipes. We tweak the recipes using classic techniques to make them taste better. I won't say that they will taste better than your mother's or grandmother's or what you can cook. It's just leave it open to your interpretation. We will have generous portions and very good service, we hope. And the reception that I've received in being part of the community, where my home is in Evansville, has just been phenomenal. It's just mind blowing that there's a type of reception that's all been positive, that people have told me they look forward to having a spot that is maybe not a diner, maybe not a coffee house, maybe not a bar, but maybe a place that they can get a genuinely fresh, well-cooked meal served by people that care about they being there. And we hope that we can fill that niche and grow into it over a long period of time. So I just thank you for your consideration tonight for the Class B license.
Good, and thank you for your explanation.
You're welcome.
So, anyone else who would like to address the board during this public hearing? Okay, so just procedurally, how are C and D different?
C is the action.
To issue a license?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I see. And then the next is we actually put the license. Okay.
The public hearing is for... I would just like to note that we did follow the ordinance. Peggy and I did follow the ordinance, and we sent this public hearing notice to every person that lived within 300 feet of this establishment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Candy. And I would mention also, we have a large packet of materials for renewal of licenses that we'll review tonight and approve June 1st. The most complete packet I looked at was the one we got from Holstein Restaurant from Scott. He had a lot of information that we don't require that was, I think, very important for his employees to have. So, thanks for doing that. We appreciate that, and that raises expectations even more so. Good for you.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Scott, when are you opening? Do you have a date yet?
Next week.
Next week?
Yes.
Okay. And when you do open, do you have hours that you have determined?
We'll be serving from 11 o'clock in the morning until 9 o'clock on weekdays, and then until 9:30 on Friday and Saturday nights. We are a dinner house that will also be serving like lunches throughout the week. And on Saturdays and Sundays, we'll feature a brunch from 9 o'clock until 3 o'clock. We will be closed on Sunday nights and on Mondays all day each week.
Thank you.
So continuous hours is in between Tuesday and Sunday.
Okay. Any other questions? So our action is to issue a Class B Fermented Malts Beverage and Class C Wine License for Scout Enterprise LLC.
What?
No. Do I do that before I do this?
I would close it.
Okay. I will close the hearing then. I guess I do that first. And then we go to the action is to, for the, issue the license for Holstein Restaurants. Need that motion a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion, second, to issue the Class B license. Any further discussion or questions?
And Class C wine.
And Class C wine, I'm sorry. It's a good thing you're here.
It's okay.
Can we move over here?
No.
Okay, so the license is a Class B Fermented Malts Beverage and Class C Wine License for Scout Enterprise. Any further question or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So then we'll go to Item D, Discussion Possible Action, Approving the Issuing of a Class B Fermented Malts Beverage and Class C Wine License for Scout Enterprise LLC by Scott Zeitler, agent, Holstein Restaurant, 101 South Main Street, Oregon, Wisconsin.
You did that.
What's that?
You did it after you closed.
Okay, well, I'm still confused how C and D fit together. So are we done with five?
We're done with five.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yep.
I guess you're done, Scott.
Grace listed it twice because one has to be the public hearing notice and then the action.
Okay. I hope we don't do that again.
Steve, just a quick question.
Yeah.
In here, it says that they would be closed on Sunday nights and all day Tuesdays. But you said all day Monday, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah, in this letter. Okay. Just a comment.
Thanks. Okay, I think we're done. They gave me permission to be done, so I'm over. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck. We'll look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Item 6 is approval of minutes. We have minutes for May 4th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7 is approval of vouchers. Now, we have vouchers tonight in amount of $670,486.98.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Thank you. Again, we have a motion, second, to approve vouchers in amount of $670,486.98. Roll call, please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Pool?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Bolling?
Yes.
Boudreau?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Item 8 is Community Input. This is a time when anybody in the community would like to address the board. They may do so. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to Item 9, Proclamations and Announcements. Board comments, anyone? Seeing none, we'll go to Item B, Staff Comments. Special, June 8th, Village Board Meeting at 5:00 PM instead of Finance Committee Meeting. This will be a board discussion with Village Planner Mike Slavney and review of the civic campus plan proposal from Vanderwall. So please make note on your calendars that June 8th at 5:00 will be a board meeting rather than just the Finance Committee. On to Item 10, Communication and Miscellaneous Business. Announcing Director of Public Work, Mark Beal's Retirement and Board Action Authorizing Placing of Ad for Recruitment. We have a note from the Village Administrator. The Board is requested to consider the hiring range listed in the ad and whether to include the requirement that the new director must reside within 15 miles of the village's jurisdictional limits, with residency being obtained within six months of acceptance of the offer of employment. Because residency requirement may limit the candidate pool, Mr. Grace is recommending against including the residency requirement for the position. He is recommending using midpoint of the salary range for the position up the top of the range for hiring range in attempt to generate a good pool of candidates, and he recommends increasing the top of the range to $93,000. So thoughts on those comments, please?
I like all of it, and I'll make a motion to support Mike Grace's recommendations as written.
Okay. Thank you.
Brethauer.
We have motion, second, to approve the ad not including a residency requirement and raising the salary would be the midpoint of the salary range up to the top with the top increasing to $93,000. Comments, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm sure we'll do this many times, but we're all very appreciative of what Mark has done through his, what, now 41 years? That's pretty amazing. He's got about 80 years of knowledge, I think, so that will be missed. Okay, Item B, Review of Memorandum from Village Planner Mike Slavney Regarding Updating the Current Sign Ordinance. Refer the matter to the Planning Commission and Approving Vanderwall's Work on Revising the Sign Ordinance with a Not to Exceed Amount of $7,900.
So is there board action here?
Yes.
So I'll make the motion. I'm assuming that the board action is to approve Vanderwall's work on revising the sign ordinance not to exceed $7,900.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
One comment I'd like to make, you know, this is something that I brought up pretty quickly upon getting on the board, is that I think to the extent that you enforce the sign ordinances, the village stays organized. To the extent that you allow the signs to be out of the compliance with the ordinance, it sort of becomes a slippery slope, right? So it's really nice, I'm very happy that we are taking a look at the sign ordinance and revising it. My hope is that we'll enforce it as well, so that it's meaningful for the village, so that it actually lives.
Yeah, and that's the same thing that Mr. Slavney has had at Plan Commission meetings, and this goes back a long ways, right, Scott? A long ways. And it can be a pretty hot topic among businesses. I know when this first came up, Mr. Slavney told me, if you want to see the impact of it, drive University Avenue in Middleton where the ordinance that they're looking at here was put into place and how much more uniform the signs are there and how much less obtrusive they are, let's still identify the business as well. So we'll hear more about that from as time goes on, too. Did we have a second?
We have a first, second.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought. So, discussion or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Recognition of Municipal Clerks Week. There's a resolution proclamation in our packet. Let me just go through some of this because I do think it is important to recognize this. For as the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the clerk is the oldest among public servants, and where the office of the clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs and professional organizations, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Jill Parisey, Dane County Executive, do hereby recognize the week of May 4th through May 8th as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So thank you. We appreciate what our clerks, assistant clerks, and so on do. We appreciate it, and it is a very important position with little room for not doing things right, especially at election time. And our elections have gone very smoothly, and we appreciate what you all do. Okay, Item D, From May 4th Board Meeting. Informationally, for the last two years, the village has issued five operating licenses to Alpine Liquor, including Ted Walsh's license. The last operating license was issued on 4/3/15. I think this came up to somebody who wondered if these people were actually getting licensed, and they have been licensed.
Yep.
As far as, I mean, all the ones that are working there.
So thanks for bringing that back.
Absolutely.
Item E, Discussion Possible Action, Approving Lieutenant, Police Lieutenant Paganoff Out-of-State Training Request.
So I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion or questions?
I assume this is in their budget somewhere for this?
Yeah, Dale's not here to answer. I wouldn't be shocked if it wasn't.
He makes a comment that he'll find it.
Yeah, and he's seems to manage dollars very well and have access over what is budgeted, so.
And we're only talking about, I think, $800 or so.
Yeah.
It's just travel expense plus room and board.
Yeah. And Chief Rising from UW is supportive of this also, if you'll note, so that's another strong advocate for it. So any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion, second, to approve Police Lieutenant Paganoff Out-of-State Training Request. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Discussion and Possible Action, Approving Additional $5,000 for Police Chief Recruitment. We have a note from our Village Administrator, Mr. Grace. There's $10,000 in 2015 budget for consulting work for hiring the new police chief. Thirteen police chief applications were received with six being selected to be interviewed at the end of May. Requirement of the completed questionnaires impacted the quantity of applicants, applications submitted, but not the quality. So folks have looked at those. We have six really strong applicants for that, but we do need to approve that additional $5,000 for the police chief recruitment. So I would need a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Have motion, second. Discussion or questions?
What are we going to get for this additional 5,000?
I can't tell you the amount, but I know Mike said one of the things was that Chief Rising will do the background reference checks.
Okay.
I don't know if that's all of it, but that's a major part of that amount of money.
Because I'm looking at this, and it looks like they've got candidates selected, so I just didn't know what we were, why we needed the extra money, because, but that's a good reason why, so that's fine.
Yeah, there's a day of screening, there's a day of interviews, there's meetings with the Police Commission, reports back to board and stuff, too, so there's still considerable to go on.
But that doesn't cost us anything for that, does it?
Anytime Chief Rising is with us, it costs us.
Right, but she's not going to be, well, I thought the Police Commission hired.
They do.
But she's going to be recommending or strongly helping them.
Yes, advising, yes, yeah. Yeah, she's been a real stabilizing force with her officers because of the connection through the interviews with them, and they just feel that they have somebody that knows what they want and can help move in that direction.
Okay.
So give them a much higher sense of comfort. Good questions? Anything else? Okay, seeing none, we have motion, second, to approve an additional $5,000 for Police Chief Recruitment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Dane County Housing Report and Summit on May 27, 2015. Our recommendation is to refer the report and Village Planner's memo to the Planning Commission, and the full report is on the village's webpage. Any comments from anyone here?
I thought it was a rather interesting report in terms of where Oregon fits into the housing deficit situation.
Do you want to comment more on that, Doug, right now?
No.
Or wait till it comes back from the commission?
I'll wait till it comes back.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that it made me think about, and something I think for the village board to consider, is when developers are coming in with plans to build, I don't know that I have seen requirements from the village. I have seen requirements from the village that they include affordable housing in their developments, but I know that in the city of Madison that that has been a requirement and it might be something that we want to consider so that we can start to build out some of the affordable housing units that we're going to need now and in the future.
Sure, I think that's worth discussing, it's a hot topic, as I understand it, which doesn't mean we shouldn't take it on, so. Anything else on this item, on the housing report? So that will go to planning and then be coming back to us, so. Item H, report on the alumni hockey tournament, May 7th through 10th, 2015. I do have a report from Chief Burke. He's not able to be tonight, he asked me to enter this to the record. Says I'm pleased to report that there were no police related issues with the hockey tournament, which was May 8th and 9th, and appeared that organizations met all village's expectations and requirements. We wish to acknowledge and thank Ben Cowan for his cooperation in ensuring a safe and responsibly event, so. Thanks Ben for that and we're glad that that went well.
And I would say that I was there and it was extremely well organized and extremely well set up and well policed. The security guard was very present, everybody was very well behaved, it was just fantastic.
Good, good. It's nice to know things work that way because that's our expectation, it's good they're following through. Thanks Jeff. Okay, item I, review impossible action, the draft 2015-2020 capital improvement plan and the item there is a public works equipment review, so. Mr. Bielos?
You've got that report in front of you or that plan in front of you, I know there's a lot of big ticket items in there, which comes with being in public works, but unless you've got any specific questions about any particular piece of equipment, I'll be checking the answer.
So I just have a general comment that I wanted to make or question. When we look at some of these larger pieces of equipment that don't get used on a regular basis, do we consider the cost of renting that equipment as needed as opposed to buying it and then being responsible for the maintenance, et cetera?
Depending on the piece of equipment, it's for like a road project, I'm just going to use that as an example, if we needed a grader, we would rent one, or a dozer or whatever. For snow removal equipment and stuff like that, it's very difficult to do something like that because naturally you need it right now. We try and share equipment like with the townships or other municipalities when possible, some of that seasonal stuff that you can schedule, but most of it, not all of it, a lot of, mostly the winter stuff and the mowers are things that we, you know, our municipality has to have to, you know, get the jobs done, but we do look at that.
What about like the street sweeper in the back hall?
The back hall we use on a pretty regular basis. The street sweeper, now that we've replaced that vehicle, that, the one we've got right now was on a truck chassis that we converted, the sweeper was put on it in the summer and in the wintertime the snowball package was put on it. We put the sweeper on the truck that we kept, so we'll be sweeping streets more into, earlier in the spring like February, March when the snow starts to melt and later in the fall where now we have to, or we have in the past, we'd put it on in like November before Thanksgiving, for example, the snowball package, and then we'd leave it on until middle or end of April just because we didn't know when the last snowball was going to come, so. That piece of equipment we'll be using a lot more regularly now.
Other questions? So for people who are watching, all those items are online, you can see that by going online and finding those items and looking through those and remind that we're not approving any equipment tonight, we're just approving having to stay on the capital budget to look as time goes on, so.
And I'll just add that we'll deliberate those again in the fall when we review the budget.
Yeah.
And at that time, that list might change, right Mark?
Correct, it's possible.
You won't change it, but it might change.
Okay, so we need to have a motion to second to approve this to keep, bring that back to us.
So moved, approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item J, discussion impossible, ask regarding approving Chamber of Commerce installing banners on poles on Main Street, Spring Street and Jamesville Street. So Judy, if you want to come forward, please.
We'd like to put two on Jefferson Street, two right by the railroad dock, so that's missing on for Jefferson Street, too. So if we can add that, that'd be great.
Okay.
What we'd like to do is, I've seen other villages that have banners, I've showed some of the pictures to some of the board members and we'd like to put welcome banners up and things like that and we'd like to get some of them up before Summer Fest, so when people come to town, they can see some of the wonderful welcome to Oregon banners. So that's what we're looking at. We're still in the process of designing them yet and TIC printing has just started printing these and it's something new for them, so they're going to give us a nice rate to get them started, so.
So I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
And thanks for continuing to find ways to make Oregon a pretty place to be.
Thank you.
May I just ask a quick question?
You sure can.
Are these going to, not the kind that goes across the street, but on a pole?
No, they're going to be 17 by 36, you know the black poles we have out there?
Yeah.
They're going to be on those black poles, but also we're going to take some up Main Street and then some down Spring, or Jefferson and Spring Street and Jamesville Street.
Great idea.
So, yeah, but they'll be 17 by 36, so they'll be, so they're out of the way of the trucks and everything. I've talked to Gary a lot about it and Mark said work with Gary, so I am, and that's what we're making sure that they are within line and everything.
Good, thank you.
Okay?
Sounds good.
They'll be the same as the band ones.
It will be, they'll be the same size. One is, they have some flag ones right now, too, that those are 18 by 36, so it'd be between 17 and 18, you know, but not any bigger than, so they won't be that big, but they'll be, we're hoping to have nice pictures. Some other communities in our area have some nice ones and I did show some of those. So if anybody wants to see them, I have them on my phone.
Yeah, I was just in a community recently, I saw banners of this type and thought how nicely looked and thought about talking to Judy about looking at doing this and I walk in tonight and she's standing here with her phone showing me the pictures, so she's always a jump ahead, if not more, so.
Well, we want it to look nice.
It does, you do a nice job with them, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks Judy. Okay, so a motion to second to approve the Chamber installing banners on Main Street, Spring Street, Jamesville and Jefferson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Got it. Item K, discussion possible, action hiring Peterson and Lance Peterson for the Public Works and Water Department, limited term employee positions at hourly wage of 850 for basically the summer, right Mark?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments to make here, Mark?
I just had the board through the budget last fall, included these two positions. There was four at one time and now we're back up to three, so.
Okay.
It'll be, there'll be a lot of help freeing up public works guys.
Yeah, good, that's good. Any discussion, questions? So we have motion to second to approve hiring Pierce Peterson and Lance Peterson for Public Works and Water Department, limited term positions, hourly wage of 850, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item L, review of renewal alcohol beverage license applications. Again, there's no action tonight on a renewal. This approval licenses takes place on June 1st, 2015, but this is to bring the applications to us, we all got them in a packet which we are to turn in tonight when we're done, so if there are questions, they can be dealt with now, so things are cleared up by June 1st, so. Clerk or assistant clerk wish to make any comments?
Well, I don't really have too many comments. I guess we could share that a lot of the applicants did choose to use the policy that was approved by the Village Board, I don't even remember what month anymore. So everybody, as of right now, has a written policy, so, meeting their requirements.
Good for you.
Yep, there are a few people that have yet to pay, but obviously they won't get their license if they don't pay and they do have until June 15th to pay. And all the property taxes have been paid for all the applicants and I think that that's, unless anybody has any other questions, I think that's all I really have to say.
Okay, good. Thanks for all your work, I know it's been a whole lot more work than just what you've talked about tonight, Peggy.
As Bernier said earlier, it's kind of a baby's baby and working hard on it, so.
And I said it's the clerks department's baby.
Okay, so are there any questions after reading through this?
Oh, and can I, I'm sorry, can I say one more thing, too?
You sure can.
Sergeant Lehman that did the inspections for the police department, I would really like to thank him, he did a very thorough job and there was some, like amusement devices, not necessarily liquor license violations, but there were some amusement devices that were caught, so he did a very thorough job and I really, really appreciate that because Peggy and I like to have things right on, so it's very helpful when you have somebody doing a very thorough job, so.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? Item on Vail's Food Center, item 14, says did they complete a responsible beverage server training course? Can they check no?
Well, we did review these, but we could miss these, but they did, and if you look probably in his, in their packet, it's probably in there.
I'm sorry, Miss Steph, okay. Good. Same question on?
You saw it?
Yeah, it's on the very last page, Miss Steph.
Same question on which one?
Alpine Liquors. He made a note that he completed 2014 and automatically renews with a class AMB renewal, is that right?
Well, that's the state statute that it does, like, once you're a liquor license holder, you can, but this board has decided to incorporate it into their ordinance where, with their supplemental, that they have to take it every two years, so Peggy and I are keeping track of when they took their class as to when they would have to renew it per the supplemental application, if that, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah. So Alpine Liquors is okay?
Yeah, he.
It's 2014, so it'd be good through 16.
Yep. And that's listed, yep. 529, 2014.
Okay. Anyone else on anything, any questions? So again, these come back to us June 1st for the approval of renewal and again, thanks to Candy and Peggy for what they've done, but also for our license holders for doing their job. Is that what the two of you are here for?
No.
Okay. Okay, so again, there's no action on items, so we will go to the back page, which takes us to item 11, report of committees, Park Board, May 6th, 2015. Trustee Brett Hauer.
Yeah, the first item, Mr. Jeff Olson of Arbor Systems made a presentation to a recent Village Board meeting regarding the proposal to inventory all of the ash trees in the village to determine how much damage there has been by Emerald Ash Bore. And so the Village Board wanted to run it by the Parks Board first before signing off on it. Parks Board has reviewed it and approved, again, the idea of Mr. Olson conducting the inventory with funds provided by the Village Board budget.
So I'll second the motion.
Thank you. So again, as Doug said, Mr. Olson was here, went through this and then did go to the Park Board, so is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two?
Second item regarding limited herbicide spraying on weeds on Statts and Faust baseball diamonds and it would be paid for out of the baseball association itself, Youth Baseball Association, and it would be limited to the infield on those two fields, it would not be the entire baseball field. So the motion is to approve Oregon Youth Baseball to spray for weeds by Brooklyn Seasonal Care with LLC on Statts and Faust fields.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Were there any thoughts regarding pets or people possibly getting ill from these herbicides?
There was a discussion, limited discussion about that and the belief of the presentation of the presenters was that it would not cause any problems to people or to pets.
Did anyone check village liability in the event that that would happen, though?
At that meeting, no.
See, Mark, don't they have to be certified, suppliers?
I believe so, I wasn't part of that discussion, but I would assume this Brooklyn LLC would have insurance to cover them, their company for that.
Yeah, I think any application on public property must be a certified applicator, they can't do it, so.
Then I would offer a friendly amendment to that motion that pending, certifying that this company has the appropriate insurance, if that makes sense.
Does that amendment have a second?
Well, he's trying to make an amendment to my, to Doug's motion.
Yes.
So doesn't, doesn't, don't we have to vote on Doug's motion and then motion again?
You vote on the amendment and that adds it to the motion if we approve it, because that would make, if we approve this, it would make the motion as is, plus that they have insurance to cover any concerns. The amendment, the amendment gets added to the motion. Right, Judy?
I think so.
Yeah, that's my rec, Robert's rules, but.
So, yeah.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, first, did we get a second on that amendment?
Okay.
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Doug?
The comment is that they ask for action to be taken on this motion sooner rather than later because of the fast growing weeds that are now in the field itself, so that if we could communicate the decision sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you. I think we can, you could call them, right Mark, tomorrow and find out?
Gary's got a contact person.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we could find out tomorrow, probably right away in the morning and see if we approve all this, so. So the first thing, any more discussion on the amendment?
Since we drove second to that motion, does he need a second amendment?
No, no, doesn't need to be the same person, does it?
I don't think so.
I don't think it has to be the same person, no, it doesn't have to be the same person for amendment, it can be somebody else.
Okay.
Well, we're going to go ahead, if it's wrong, let us know, so we don't do it again. We don't have amendments very often. Okay, so we have, we're voting on the amendment to check with Brooklyn Seasonal Care to be sure they have the appropriate insurance to do this application, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay.
I just want to make a comment, I know the state does, like this Brooklyn Seasonal Care, they have to go take a state test, because I know a person that gives that and so they have to follow all those rules, so.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would, I would think they're all set up to do that since they're an LLC, I can imagine they're not. Okay, so then we have the motion to second to approve Oregon Youth Baseball to spray for weeds in the infield by Brooklyn Seasonal Care on Statts and Faust Fields. Any further discussion or questions on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, please.
Item three, there's been some citizen complaints about the turf in the dog park and Public Works is considering asking for funds to buy artificial turf, I believe it is, and the funding would come from license fees, dog license fees in part, and also from the Public Works operating fund, I believe.
Artificial turf, are you sure?
No, this is just grass eaten.
It is grass eaten, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, well, that seems pretty reasonable.
What?
Looks like.
That's all right, just wanted to make sure.
Looks like some herbicide and some fescue grass, a total of $4,731, so, so we need a second on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And I've got a question, so not being a dog owner myself, I truly don't know, but is this going to be a standing budgeted item then? I mean, do we have to keep the grass to a certain standard with dogs running through there and using the park?
What happened, Jeff, is, as Steve mentioned in the motion or Doug did, we had, because of the area that was fenced off, it was just full of thistles, so the Public Works has gone in there and now killed all the thistles and there's bare spots all over the place, so now it's reintroducing a seed to fill that area in and basically choke out any thistles in the future.
So this is really just a continuation of the project that was started?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think at some point in time there'll be walking paths with bark on them also that we'll go through theirs in the future, but this is just about the thistles and weeds and stuff, so.
And one other question, what's the process when we're, when we're treating and preparing these areas of the dog park to ensure that the work we're doing is actually taking root, not being trampled over and that the chemicals that are being applied aren't being transferred to the animals and then ultimately the animals getting sick?
We've actually, through spray, through the spraying process, we've actually locked that down for a certain period of time. I'm not sure what that, how many days that is, but to, two reasons. One, to make sure that doesn't happen. And the other reason is to make sure the application that we did is meaningful.
So then we'll be locking the dog park down for periods of time to allow the seed to take root?
I haven't talked specifically to Gary about how, how he's gonna implement this. I'm assuming that he's gonna go in and just seed everything down. And whether or not he's gonna shut anything down, I'm not sure. I'll have to ask him about that. The spraying, what they did is they did one park, shut it down, so they could still use the other one and then flip it over and do the same thing.
Again, I have a question. Again, it's about use of herbicides when pets, when pets are in the area, or children, or people. How do we know someone isn't gonna get, become ill from contact with the herbicides?
Well, I suppose there's always a chance. Like I said, we lock it, we lock it down to prevent anybody from going into the dog park area I'm just talking about.
So Doug, did we get a, was, did we get complaints? Is that what, what's wrong here?
More about the thistles.
The dogs are complaining?
No.
They might be, you just can't, you just can't understand them.
It's a really high wine.
Yeah. Boy, I just, I, I think I'd be more comfortable if we just went in and took out the thistles, but I imagine there are a lot of them.
They're gone, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is to, this is to plant grass to replace the bare spots that the thistles, where they were.
I share that concern about use of herbicides and illness and whatever. But again, it needs to be a licensed applicator, and it needs to be properly signed, which is part of being a licensed applicator, so people know. They can have the choice of avoiding it if they're sensitive to it.
Yeah. Lisa, how much, how much money is in the dog license fee account?
I do not know.
Do we get any dog license fees?
Yeah.
I would say, I would say it's a, for just the dog tags alone, like the dog park, I would say it's over twenty-eight hundred.
How many?
Twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Oh, twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah. Sorry, dollars. No, I would say we're, I think we're about at the hundred and forty mark. We're a little behind last year, but we're right about that mark.
I, I guess my concern is, when we constructed that dog park, we spent over seventeen thousand dollars. I think on the fencing alone. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't remember where that's...
Yeah, it was a lot of money. I, I like the idea of having a dog park, but at some point, we have to control our costs there. Because I know budget time is coming. I know dollars are gonna be tight. And we're gonna be looking to squeeze money from one account to put it in another account so we can prioritize and do the things that we wanna do here. But again, I, I'm not trying to pick on the dog park, but I, maybe I am. But I, I guess I hesitate to, to vote for the additional money over the dog license fees that we have.
Would it, would it be okay for me to say something regarding this?
Yeah.
So I firsthand have talked to people that have been complaining about the thistles at the dog park. And I do think that some people would have gotten another dog park tag if the thistles were under control. I have had, I've had quite a few people that I've talked to that complain about the thistles.
Okay.
So, if for that...
Oh, it was pretty bad.
Well, there's a lot of thistles, but Public Works also received a lot of phone calls regarding, and emails regarding the thistles.
And we knew going in that it was gonna be a problem. That would take a few years to get that turf to where it would be good for, for an actual dog park.
Right.
I don't, we didn't talk about expense, but, but we knew that there's gonna be some ongoing work to get that shaped up. Any further discussion? So we have motion second to use Public Works' operating supply account and twenty-five hundred for the dog license fees to cover the four thousand seven hundred and thirty-one seventy-five cent expense for improvements to the dog park turf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, please, Doug.
Okay, the last item is simply to thank the Cub Scouts for their efforts to clean up trash in J.C. Park recently. There is a photo in the packet at one point, was that in, I didn't see it in tonight's packet, but there was one in our previous packet, I believe.
There's a colored photo, I scanned in the color photo. It is on the, in the packet on the website.
Okay.
That shows the kids.
So the motion is to thank them for their efforts on behalf of the village.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion second to thank you, send a thank you note to the Cub Scouts pack, which is pictured online on our packet for those who are watching. Any question or discussion? Bunch of cute kids and a bunch of garbage bags, so good for them. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, planning commission meeting, May seventh, two thousand fifteen. Trustee Carpenter.
Sure, the first item is discussion and possible recommendation regarding the preliminary plat for Park Place. The planning commission reviewed this, and my recommended motion is to approve the preliminary plat. Is there a second?
Second.
And so just to let you know, our consultants, Rupert Milkie, reviewed the plat and, and had no concerns. And I believe Scott Meyer is here tonight if you have any questions on that.
Any comments you wanna make, Scott, or just a something, okay? Okay, thank you.
Can, from my, my knowledge, I was trying to place Oregon Parks neighborhood in the Oregon Parks Avenue. Where is that?
It's behind Mulligan's on Jefferson Street, straight north.
Okay.
It's the first street that crosses over to Bergman.
So right now, it's, it's a hay field, or I'm not sure.
There's four lots there that are, there's one, four Unicando there next to the Methodist Church, and then the next ward to the east, or to the west are empty.
Any further question or discussion? We have motion second to approve the preliminary plat for Park Place. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two, please.
And then the, the second part of that would be to recommend a motion to approve the final plat for Park Place.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jeanie. Item C, finance committee, May eleventh, two thousand fifteen. Trustee Molly.
Thank you. My first motion would, will be to accept the Public Works Director's recommendation toward the engineering contract for a north and south Perry Parkway connection to Rookert Milkie in the amount of fifty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
In preparation for that extension, we're gonna start that project, or at least the Public Works Director has recommended we start that project with the engineering services. And this is just a process of accepting the bid of Rookert Milkie.
Any questions or discussion, comments, Mark? Okay. So we have motion second to award the contract to Rookert Milkie in the amount fifty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the north and south Perry Parkway connection engineering contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two, please.
Second motion is to authorize staff to request proposals for new assessor services in the village of Oregon.
Second.
Thank you.
This is something, I think our current contract has expired, so we're gonna request proposals for our next, possible next assessor. And it may be the same one, if they are, again, a little bit.
Can I actually speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please.
I haven't had a whole lot of experience with assessor contracts, so I did talk to Lee to just see what our options are for contracts. And in doing that, I talked with Lisa and Mike, and I think that they, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you were kind of agreeing with what I was saying based on my conversation with him. A lot of people have kind of been fed up with the walkthroughs, because some people are, are getting walkthroughs more than once or twice in the past four years. They, we have discussed having the full value maintenance. We can do that every year. And according to Lee, he thinks, being that we have done it for the past eight years or so, that we should continue on with that, because if we fall behind on that, then we're gonna, you know, we could have, if we didn't do it next year, we could have a four percent increase. And then the following year, we'd maybe have an eight percent increase in value of homes. So being that we've started on a full value maintenance, his recommendation was to continue on with that, and that wouldn't be a problem with any, with any contract that we do. But he said that one of the, I think it was Portage, they have a four-year contract where they are doing the full year mainten- full value maintenance for four years. They are not doing walkthroughs for two years. And then the third and fourth year, they're doing fifty percent and fifty percent of the village. Right now, we are doing twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent for, we have for the past four years. So I think that that would be a good balance of giving people a break on the walkthroughs. He, Lee, said financially that that would keep us kind of stable with the budget if we hit that four-year agreement or have a four-year agreement. It's gonna be very similar to what we're doing now. It's not gonna, you know, if we don't, if we don't do, what was I gonna say? Shoot. I lost my train of thought, sorry. He said there might be a slight increase for the third and fourth year. Third and fourth year. But like if we didn't do the full value maintenance for a couple of years, and then we decided we were gonna do it in a couple, three years out or four years out, it's gonna be a huge increase in the budget, because we'll have a break, and then it's gonna be double or triple what we're paying now, so.
Sounds like a good plan. I assume that the request for proposals will outline that process that you just described?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question, and maybe I'm just not following you, but we're on twenty-five, or twenty-five percent every year for four years? So how do people get walkthroughs every two years if we're on twenty-five percent? Shouldn't they, shouldn't there be every four years? Or am I just thinking something wrong?
Not every single house gets walked through.
Okay.
And the building permits kind of push that. So if, if someone gets a building permit for windows, or someone gets a building permit for a roof, that's going...
That triggers, okay.
That's gonna trigger them possibly getting a walk-through. And those are the people that are getting irritated with the walkthroughs.
Okay.
I mean, someone who has redone their basement, I mean, that seems a little more reasonable as to why they might get a walk-through. But some of these other, more trivial things are the people that are complaining about the walkthroughs.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? So we have a motion second to approve sending out RFPs for the new assessor agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove the soda machines from the village hall in the police building.
Second.
It's been determined that the soda machines have such low use that the soda is expiring in the machine. The soda dates is going past its expiration date, so not a good practice to sell soda that's past its expiration date, so we're just gonna remove the soda machines.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, please.
I'd like to make a motion to request proposals for telephone maintenance infrastructure from local vendors.
Second.
Thank you.
We currently have a vendor that's from La Crosse. And every time we have a problem with our phone system, we call them and we have to pay trip charges from La Crosse, to and from La Crosse, every time they come down to service our telephone equipment. So on this new request for proposals, we're gonna specify we want local, local vendors on it.
Any questions or discussion?
And again, that's for all the telephone equipment in the, in the village, so.
When would that contract take place? When would be?
I'm not sure.
I think it's gonna depend on when we send the RFPs out and... Do we have a current contract? Or has it expired? I am not sure what the contract says. I can check into it.
Would you please report that back at the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll get that back the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would this cover all village phones and police, et cetera, et cetera?
All the village equipment.
Any further questions or comments? So we have motion second to request proposals from local companies for telephone care. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, please.
I'd like to make a motion to request proposals for auditor services.
Second that motion.
We've had the same auditor firm since two thousand three. And it's industry practice just to switch from time to time and seek a new vendor just to have a new perspective and fresh eyes on the records and procedures.
Any questions or discussion? We have a motion second to send out RFPs for a new auditor agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twelve is minutes not requiring action. It's noted April eighth, two thousand fifteen, library board minutes and the library director's report and statistics. Those are in the packet and online. Thirteen is unfinished business, there is none. Fourteen is new business. Item A, approval of pending operator licenses. These have been approved by the police department. And we have a license for headquarters for Michael McKnight's. Need a motion second, please?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Some future agenda items our list will be looking at. And then item sixteen is a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thanks for your good work, folks.